All right, good evening and welcome to the, let's see, it's October 7th already, 2025 meeting of the Hickory City Council. At this time, I would like to ask the Reverend Amanda Sowards, she's the Chief Executive Officer of the Greater Hickory Cooperative Christian Ministry, and she's affectionately known as Pastor Amanda. She's already at our podium, she's going to give our invocation. I would ask that if you're able to please stand and remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Amanda, thank you for being here.
Lord, we just thank you, God, we just welcome you, we thank you into the midst of every conversation, every word, let it be. According to your will, and I just ask God that you give us wisdom, and that you just continue to guide and lead our city and our community in the ways that honor you. I ask that you give each one of our leaders wisdom, that they're able to govern well and make decisions that are honoring of your kingdom, God. I thank you just for bringing revival to Hickory, bringing back and restoring hearts, minds, spirits, and souls in every way. I thank you for leading us in the ways that push out darkness and bring light, as your kingdom of God continues to advance through Hickory. We praise you, Lord, and we just thank you for being here. We welcome you, Holy Spirit, to be in the midst of every single part of this meeting. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. All right, I see that we have at least one special guest, not that you're not all special guests, but there was a distinguished gentleman in the back there with a hat on, and he's taking his hat off, but I'm going to take this opportunity, I'm going to call on Will Hamblin, he's going to introduce our scout that's here this evening.
I'll let her introduce herself, and so, he's a member of Hickory, my kids are members of Cub Scouts, so I haven't called you before yet.
You need a hat like that, Will.
I'm, hi, I'm Mel Corazzo, part of the Unit 381, and I'm working on the community, assist and children community.
All right, well, thank you for being here, we're glad that you're here. All right, let's see, I don't think we've got any other scouts, I think that's all of them, so we'll move right along according to our agenda. This afternoon, or this evening, we have a special presentation from our fire department. It's a proclamation, so I'll ask that all of the chief and administration, anybody that's here from the fire department, if you'll come forward, and I'll present this proclamation on behalf of Fire Prevention Week. All right, this is a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week, it says, "Whereas fire remains a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium-ion batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risk. Whereas most of the electronics used in homes daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys, are powered by lithium-ion batteries, which if misused, damaged, and improperly charged, can overheat, start a fire, or explode. Whereas the National Fire Protection Association reports an increase in battery-related fires ununderscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium-ion batteries. And whereas residents should know to follow three key calls to action: buy only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas lithium-ion batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space, and improper use such as overcharging, using off-brand chargers without safety certification, or explosion batteries to damage can result in fire or explosion. Whereas the City of Hickory and first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety, education, and community outreach. And whereas the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Charge Into Fire Safety: Lithium-Ion Batteries in Your Home," serves to remind us of the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium-ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Now therefore, I Hank Guest, Mayor of the City of Hickory, North Carolina, on behalf of the Hickory City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of October 5 through the 11th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week, and urge all the people of Hickory to make sure their homes have working smoke alarms and to practice fire safety. Witness hereof, this 7th day of October, 2025." Chief? Now also note, and I don't know if you want to say anything about it, I think you've had some recent promotions among some of your management staff, so do you want to talk about that?
Two are staying here, yes, Deputy Chief Jason Lowrance, Deputy Chief Brian Carver. And I'll also add, we just kicked off the week at O'Devo, Jason was there for the Fire Prevention Week, and that was all the fire departments in the county were there for that. And there's the community event, Saturday, which is going to be at the Black Fire Museum in Urban Cycle. I don't know if anybody's ever been, it's really neat, we have a home fire truck in there.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
All right, congratulations. All right, next item on the agenda is persons requesting to be heard, I'll ask at this time if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the council this evening. All right, there doesn't appear to be anyone that would like to address the council, I always like to remind folks that it's not necessary that you wait until a council meeting to be able to speak to myself or one of the council members, we all make ourselves available, so you can do that just about any time. Item number six on the agenda is approval of the regular meeting of September the 16th, 2025, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, that carries unanimously. Item number seven is our reaffirmation ratification on second readings, once again, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, that also carries unanimously. Item number eight is our consent agenda, I'll ask if there's any members of council or staff that would like to have any item removed from the consent agenda.
Move for approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, the consent agenda carries unanimously. All right, we have a one departmental report this evening, so at this time, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood, to introduce our one and only departmental report for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Guest, member of the City Council, Mr. Swanson. The one departmental report tonight from staff is crime statistics update, it'll be presented by Police Department Police Chief Brian Adams. Every year, every department across the country reports their FBI crime statistics, it's Part 1, Part 2, which is violent crime and property crimes, and Brian's going to show you kind of where we stand this year.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, Mr. Wood, Mr. Swanson.
Hey, Brian. Chief, you may want to pull that mic just a little closer, I turned it around when I was doing the proclamation.
That better?
That's better, sir.
Thank you all for having me tonight, obviously, as Mr. Wood said, we're going to talk about crime statistics. Specifically tonight, we're going to focus on the full year of 2024, and how it relates to all the previous years, and I'll give you a glimpse at the end where we are in 2025 through the month of August. Start off with a little bit about what Mr. Wood said, index crimes is what we report to the FBI. It is mandatory in the state of North Carolina that all agencies in the state of North Carolina have to report, it's not mandatory around the nation, but it is mandatory in the state of North Carolina, we all report, we actually report those to the North Carolina State Bureau of Investigation, they're vetted after we send those to them, and then they send those to the FBI, and then they have their uniform crime reports out online, where any citizen anytime can go online anywhere and see these, this data on the FBI's website. They consist of the, of the, of the eight crimes there that you see on the left, they're broken down into two categories, violent crime and property crime. The violent crime, obviously, you can see murder, rape, robbery, and aggravated assault, and property crime of burglary, larceny, motor vehicle theft, and arson. So I'm going to show you some graphs next, and they're going to, because it's going to be looking at the same stats, but it's going to be from different perspectives, so this first graph you're going to see, it's a, it's a graph of the last 10 years of all the index crimes in the City of Hickory. And so, I think when you first look at that, I'm sorry, it starts in January 2014 and ends in December 31st, 2024, because that's what you're looking at right there, all those index crimes we just saw. I think the first thing that stood out to me when I saw that is that 2020, is 2024 was drastically lower than any other year, and then you see the two spikes, and I think in 2017 and 2021, those two spikes were related to larcenies and motor vehicle theft. The, and the type of larceny specifically in those two spikes were break-in, entering, and larceny of motor vehicles, that's essentially when somebody goes up and, and even opens a open car door, goes in the car and steals something, that's, that's, that's that crime. So when that happens, unfortunately during these years, people were leaving their keys in their car frequently, and that's why it ramped up to stolen motor vehicles as well too, so that, so that accounts for those two spikes. That, that's where we are from a 10-year perspective. So now we're going to step out from a 30-year perspective, and I want to start this slide with, this is the 30th year, 30th year that the City of Hickory has been doing community-wide city, community policing, which is why this slide is so important to me. If you look from 1995, crime index, oh, my glasses on, sorry, 3,447 in, in 1995, in 2024, 1471, the same index crimes track, which is phenomenal. The root of that, there's many things we're going to talk about tonight that, that, that are responsible for that, but the root of it is community policing. It is community policing, it's getting out and partnering and building relationships with our community, and I, I want to highlight that slide because that, that's the root of it all. And you see some more spikes back in the early 2000s, I didn't go back and look at all those, but you do see the one in 17 and in 2021, like I pointed out in the last slide. This one looks at the full years of 2022, 23, and 2024 in comparison, you'll see in the middle of the slide there, it just jumps out, in 2023 to 2024, we had a 17% decrease in violent crime and a 4.7% decrease in property crime. I think the overall index rate from 23 to 24 was almost 7% of all those, and you can see that they trended down, I think there's only one category, even in 22, there's only one, I think robbery maybe had a couple more in 24 than, than it did in 2022, so obviously trending in the right direction. So 2024, Hickory Police Department responded to 106,820 calls for service, this was a, and those are callers that call into the police department, and those are self-initiated calls by our staff, so those are combined for that, and I'll touch back on that in just a minute. So overall, there was a 6.38% increase from, from 2023 in, in calls for service. So if you look at these calls, here's a top 10 calls for service, if you'll notice, all those index crimes, all the index crimes we talked about previously, none of those are on there. Actually, if you have to go back about nine years before an index crime is on our top 10 calls for service, I think 2018 it was that we had a, that larceny was on this top 10 list, but, but, but since then, there's not been any. I will call your attention to these, obviously, you can see what they are, but I will call your attention to number four through nine, being removals, property checks, civil disturbances, citizen contacts, health checks, and suspicious persons. And I don't have the exact numbers on this because right now currently, our, our software does not, it does not allow us to track this, but we are working with our, with our vendor, but most of these crimes from four through nine are related to us going to calls for service for homelessness, to dealing with people that are homeless. But we are working with our vendor to try to be able to track those more clearly, those total about 13,500 calls, just to be, just a rough number, just those four through nine So how the FBI calculates crime rate, see on the screen, FBI, crime rate is calculated by dividing the number of reported crimes by the total population, the result is multiplied by, by, by 100,000, result equals crimes per 100,000. This can be reduced down to, to a 1,000 population for smaller cities, I did that for this particular presentation, obviously because we're not at 100,000, we're in the mid 40s, in 2024 we were. So I did the crime rate for a total index rate of all those eight crimes, if you, if you do those, it was 32 per 1,000 of all the index crimes, if you look at violent crime, it was four per 1,000, and property crime rate was 28 per 1,000. In comparison to 23, those all went down, in 23, it was 35% for index rate, 5% for violent, and 30% for property crime rate. I do want to draw your attention down to the very bottom, there's a reason it's, it's in bold and it's underlined, I want to read this, just to be clear on it, index rates can be misleading when used to compare cities due to the fact, some cities decrease in population during the day while others increase in population. We are obviously one of those cities, we about triple in size every single day in the City of Hickory. If you go back over the last 25 years of our calls for service, we spiked starting at 8 o'clock in the morning, and we go back down to 8 o'clock at night, so it directly correlates from the amount of people we're seeing in our city to the calls for service that we've had over many years. So this is directly from the FBI, because it's, it's important, because, because this happens unfortunately a lot when people want to go put statistics out online, but I'm going to read this because it is important, because this is directly from the FBI. Individuals using these tabulations are cautioned against drawing conclusions by making direct comparisons between cities. Comparisons lead to simplistic and or incomplete analysis that often create misleading perceptions adversely affecting communities and residents. Valid assessments are possible only with careful study and analysis of the range of unique conditions affecting each local law enforcement jurisdiction. When you compare us to a city that doesn't triple during the daytime, obviously, you can see how that would affect that, so that's, that's, that's why they put that out on their website, when you go look at the, the uniform crime reports on FBI's website. So NiBRS, NiBRS Incident Based Reporting, that's the new system, back in 2021, the FBI switched over to the National Incident Based Reporting System, the previous system was the summary reporting system that they used, we made the switch, HPD made the switch at the end of 2018, so we were ahead of the curve, and you'll see why in just a minute, because it's because of better data and better crime tracking. It was implemented to improve the overall quality of crime data collected by, by law enforcement. So NiBRS captures details on each single crime incident, as well as on separate offenses within the same incident, and I'll give you an example of that. On the previous summary reporting system, let's say we stopped a car and the driver had, had a weapons charge, he had an illegal weapon on him, and the passenger had, had narcotics that were illegal, and the back passenger had, had some kind of stolen property on him. That would have been reported under one incident report, and the, and the most significant crime would have, is what would have been reported. Under NiBRS now, all three of those get reported independently for better crime tracking, so that, and that's, that's why it was, it was done. Obviously, including information on victims, known offenders, relationships between victims, which is really important, and it allows relationship tracking, like for spouses, for acquaintances, strangers, and people that are known and unknown each other, which is really important for us for investigations. The end result, better data for analysis and comparison going forward. So focus for 2025, and I'm going to add for beyond, property crimes, we always have a focus on property crimes, especially those breaking in and larceny of motor vehicles. Obviously, the two spikes over the last 10 years, I told you earlier, they were, they were because of property crimes, so we're always focused on that for education to our public, education out through social media, lock your cars, don't leave valuables in your cars, don't leave your keys in your cars, things of that nature. We're working with, just to be specific, in very dense areas, you know, where cars are populated, like apartment complexes, where we see a lot of our break-ins, we're working with those apartment managers, asking them to push out on their platform that they communicate with their, with their tenants, all this information as well too, that way we just, it gets reiterated all the time to try to help prevent this. And then obviously for repeat offenders, that's what we did back in 2017, we developed a task force, and there was a lot of repeat offenders, and that's why, that's why it dropped so suddenly in 18, 19, and 20, because they were repeat offenders, and we worked with the, with the Catawba County District Attorney's Office to prosecute them and, and get long sentences. There actually is a prosecutor with the Catawba County District Attorney's Office, we have a great relationship with them, and he focuses on repeat offenders, so we are feeding him that on a regular basis, those people that, that meet this criteria, to try to hold them accountable, to not be back out in our city committing crimes. Traffic enforcement is not part of index crimes, but I want to put in here because it is a, it is a, it is a focus of ours. We want our public to be out safe on the streets while they're driving around for, for everyone. Back in 2024, just to, just to give you a number, we wrote about 7,050 citations to equal about 8,200 charges for, for traffic offenses in the, in the City of Hickory. People ask sometimes why we do pay attention to city traffic, why do we announce a month ahead of time before we're going to be out doing traffic enforcement out in certain areas, but that's because we want to change behaviors. We want people to know that, hey, we're going to be enforcing traffic in this area, it's a time to slow down, I think the, what people say, that, that the change of habit, it takes about 30 days to change a habit, that's why we do it a month at a time, we want people to see us out there for that month, and it changes their behaviors to slow down, we don't want to have to write people a bunch of tickets, but, you know, if they don't slow down, obviously we will, but that's why we announce it, we want people to slow down on their own and not have to write tickets, but obviously, we do write a bunch of tickets based off those numbers, but I did want to touch on that. Continue of non-traditional and collaborative approaches to reduce crime and cause, Community Response Unit, I want to highlight this unit, have you, I'm sure you've seen the cars out around town, they're, they're about the color of the green that are on the slides, and little small white cars. This was born out of an idea we've had for many years at Hickory Police Department, how do we keep local kids local? We want to keep local kids local, how do we do that? How do we get local kids to come into our police department and stay and want to police here? Because it was important to me, and it was important to Chief Bear, and important to Chief Wiston, because we were all from Hickory, and we knew the importance of policing in our own city, so we, we talked about it for many years about how to do that. Well, we were in a meeting one day, and it, and an apprenticeship program at CBCC, the local apprenticeship program, was brought to our attention, and we said, hey, can we do this for police officers coming out of high school, you know, for 18-year-olds, and like, well, it's never been done, I was like, well, that's, that's what we do here at the Police Department, we do things that's never been done before. And so, we started, no, we started researching it, and, and in 2022, it came to fruition, we started hiring people straight out of high school into community response units, and they've been out patrolling, you know, the streets of Hickory as a civilian for about three years now. Two of them who came from Hickory High School and from St. Stevens are out police officers now, a third one, and they're both Hispanic females, the third one is an Hispanic male, he came from Hickory High School as well, and he is in B L T right now, he should graduate here in December, so we're excited about that. But the kind of calls for service that they go to are traffic crashes that are, minor traffic crashes, they go to those, they go to calls for service like property checks, they do a lot of foot patrols on Union Square, downtown, CityWalk, they're doing things of that nature, being seen, they're taking reports also like found property, stolen property of a very minor amounts, really taking, and, I'm sorry, home watches as well too, really taking, doing things that police officers have traditionally done for many years that they really didn't need to be doing. So when we saw that was working really well, and it was allowing police officers a lot of extra time to go be proactive and go out and being in the community and doing community policing, which reduces crime, we were like, wow, that is really good. So we've actually now, we, we have more than just apprentices, we have, we have some retired people, we have a retired FBI agent, we have retired person from the food industry, and it's going extremely, extremely well, so, and they led to a lot of our self-initiated calls for service that I'll talk to you about in just a minute down at the bottom of the screen, but a great, a great program. The LEAD Program, Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion, is something we're involved in, it was born about six or seven years ago, Chief Bear was a really big push behind that. Essentially what it is, is we go to a call for service, somebody, we find out that they're committing a small crime, a misdemeanor crime, if you will, because they have some kind of addiction going on, and we talk to them about the LEAD Program right then, and if they're willing to commit, then they don't get charged that night, and that charge gets diverted if they're willing to enter through the, if they're willing to enter into the program. So it's been very successful, it's diverted a lot of people out of the criminal justice system like, criminal justice system like it's intended to do, but it's ultimately saved people's lives too, so that, that's, that's more important, obviously. And then the Community Navigator position, and I think most of you know Casey McCollum is our Community Navigator, six years now at the Hickory Police Department. When Casey's position was born, I was not the chief, but I was on the command staff, and when we were in the room, we were talking about what this would look like, and it was always about quality and not quantity, because he was going to be focused on homelessness, and I think you all know, and obviously, and you see around the country, you can't throw a problem-solving blanket over homelessness and it just fixes it, you have to sit down and you have to get one-on-one with people, and you have to find out what's going on. So Casey, over the last six years, has had about 500 people refer to him, of those, through officers and citizens and just different ways, about 250 of those people have committed to working together to help themselves and, and to work with Casey to try to get themselves out of homelessness. Of those 250 people that at least vetted with him at first to, to commit to that, he's either housed or relocated in a safe manner, and by relocated, we do a lot of work, we just don't take somebody somewhere and drop them off, he does a lot of work, calls families, and gets people in, in safe places, but he's been able to do that for 87 people out of 250, and it might not seem big, but, but that's 35%, that's a pretty phenomenal rate, because he's taken the time to sit down and focus on quality, so really want to highlight that, Casey's doing a great job, and, and we're going to continue doing that. Quality of life issues, moving down to code enforcement, nuisances, the broken windows theory of policing, when you see broken windows, when you see graffiti, when you see littering, when you see amounts of trash and just disarray, it, it creates disorder, and it can create perception of, of neglect, and which can encourage serious crime. Our code enforcement is out on the front end of that every single day, not just them, but our animal control people are, anybody who has, you know, sight and can go on out in our city to see these things going on, police officers, they're, they're calling code enforcement, and they're, and they're directing them to these situations, and obviously, there's a lot of citizens calling too. So we take that very seriously, because disorder, it will, it's been proven over time, that if, if you let disorder go on, that it, that it can ramp up serious crime, and obviously, we're, we're going to stay ahead of that, obviously as much as we can. In those cases, we're going to pursue nuisance abatement processes, when and if we can, and if necessary, to get that fixed, obviously. Next is continued emphasis on community policing and intelligence-led policing through the use of technology. You know, I said a couple years ago, that from 1998 until a few years ago, I made this statement that I don't think policing can advance any faster technology-wise than it did from the, from the time I started. Well, I'll be honest with you, I've had to eat those words here recently, because it is ramped up so much with, obviously with artificial intelligence, what's going on in, in policing, and all the realms that's going on with that, it is advancing very quickly. Things of like AI in report writing, in investigations, license plate readers, we have those, I'm in the city already, obviously looking for more, they, those have helped us solve so many crimes since we've had those, I can't even begin to tell you, I should have those numbers, I'm sorry I don't, but they have helped us solve so many crimes, and they're just a valuable tool. Cameras, body worn cameras that we wear, we started those in 2013, we were the first agency in the state of North Carolina to have body worn cameras, now, they actually can go live communications or supervisor, if officer's in some kind of trouble, they can actually log in and see what's going on, so that technology is just being driven all the time. Drones, there are agencies in this state right now that have drones dispatching to calls for service that police officers call into, that, that they, that the drones are on scene, and they're filming back what's going on for officers, so just, just some of the kind of technology, real-time crime centers and digital forensics, and I just want to speak about that just for one minute, for digital forensics, every case, every, especially every of the index crimes that I, that I mentioned, all those serious crimes, they all involve a commuter, a, a computer, all, because everybody has a cellphone now, and digital forensics is so critical in solving those cases, because if people don't want to talk to you, if you get all their phone data, that solves the case, that's solving most of our critical cases, especially our homicides that, that we have. One other type of case unfortunately that we're dealing with, with a lot of digital forensics, is internet crimes against children, that takes a lot of work to, to, to work on, and we have very special people at our police department that work on that every single day, because it's, it's a tough thing to investigate, but one of the things that they do as part of our digital forensics, and our investigators work on. And lastly, well, community policing, all that technology is great, it is, it's amazing, and, and it's going to get better, and it's going to help us solve more crime, but I want to go back to the first of that sentence, what I mentioned earlier, continued emphasis on community policing. This is our 30th year, but we're as passionate about it today as we were back for me 28 years ago, and teaching our young officers how to get out of the car, how to walk up to people and go have a conversation, how to sit on front porches, how to go into businesses, that is the root of, of lowering crime, that's why that linear line on, on that scale was so low, and so we are committed to that, we always have been, and we always will be, and we're just going to get better at, that's our, that's our, that's our desire, and that's what we're going to do. That's our, that's our, that's our desire and that's what we're gonna do. The last thing that I'll tell you is continue to be proactive in uncommitted time. Because of the community response units, it has allowed our officers to have a lot of free time, and that is another reason that we are experiencing such a low crime rate after thirty years. We have a lot of hard-working police officers. That starts with the, with the hiring process. We want people that are gonna work, because we are a busy agency and we're proud for of that. We're, because we're very proud of that. We don't shy away from it. And, 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 and it's uncommitted time. Our police officers and all our staff, they're out working and they're out trying to solve crime and out trying to get in front of it to try to tamp it down. And so, that's why, and, and, but that eleven point one nine percent increase was a lot due to the community response units, all the proactive things that they're out doing, and it freed up a lot of time for police officers to do that. So, really, in calls for service, as, that I went back to a hundred and six thousand eight hundred and twenty, that six percent increase was due to self-initiated activities. So, calls for service, calling from citizens was actually down, down somewhat. And that's what I, after, and I'll be glad to take any, I know there's a lot of information in a very short amount of time, and I'll be glad to-
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You had said that we do, and I, I repost on social media about your code enforcement or your traffic enforcement, that you're being proactive. Do you have any measurement to say how much that will decrease? How many tickets or how many offenses happen in that area? As if you hadn't done it, is there any way to compare that?
Nothing comes to mind, how we do that, but I, I can definitely do some research on that and, and see. I don't, but nothing comes to mind of how we would measure the, the reduction. I mean, we can measure the reduction in complaints.
Okay.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, kind of, it does, what kind, can, how can we measure that? Because I know we push it out there and people should take note. Do you feel like there's less tickets being written or less offenses in those areas when we push that out?
It'd be comparing the last time you focused on a specific area and then comparing to the next time.
Yeah.
Maybe, you know, per officer kind of basis.
Yes, I think we'd be good, for sure.
Okay, thank you. And the other is, I think you said there was like thirteen thousand calls on homeless issues. Do you feel like that has decreased with the community navigator being implemented or just has remained steady on the homeless?
And I just want to go back on that. So, all of those calls, every one of those were not just for homelessness. A lot of those were, I'm not able to break those out, but, but a vast majority were. The total of all those were thirteen thousand. And, and, and dealing with homelessness, they are all also involved in other types of causes for service, too. Those are just highlighted on there, because they're our top ten calls for service. Would you answer, would you, would you say your, your second part of your question again, ma'am, please?
Do you feel like that has decreased with the community navigator being implemented?
I don't, I don't, I don't feel like it has, no, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Brian's not gonna say it. I'll, you know, we, issues with nonprofits, he mentioned quantity or quality over quantity. That needs to be the focus, otherwise, it, the issue proliferates. And so, that's gonna be a focus of ours, engaging nonprofits on, and quality over quantity.
Well, I do know, also, the COG has implemented a homelessness response, and I think they mirrored much of what the city of Hickory had done and met with Casey, and I think that's being a success. So, thank you for that.
We are seeing people from all over the country, to be honest with you, that are, that are here in Hickory homeless and all over our state, all over our region, all over the country, to be honest with you. So, and, and, but we're, we're working, we're to better track that as well, too, to get you better numbers, for us to get better numbers, to be able to track that through our software, to, to understand that better, because it, it is an issue. And we're getting complaints, a lot from our citizens, from business owners. It's affecting business and, you know, quality of life issues. It is, I'm sure you all are getting those same complaints. So, we're, but we're working on the best we can within the constitution and with the laws in the state, you know, North Carolina and the ordinances. We're working as, as diligently as we can to enforce those things to, when we get those complaints.
Y'all do a tremendous job. Thank you.
Well, go ahead. Let me go, let me, first of all, say, for our Hickory Police Department, certainly, I believe, needs to be commended for the wonderful work that they do in the city of Hickory. Certainly, within community involvement and engagement, when I'm in the midst of my own ward, many of the community meetings that we have, pack officers and officers are always present, engaging with other residents within the community. And so, certainly, whenever we're involved in public service, we don't really, we're thought about when something goes wrong, kind of like firefighters. We don't think about them until something catches on fire. So, certainly, I believe that the Hickory Police Department needs to be commended. One question is, and I know you mentioned about the uniform crime reporting and the misinformation that goes out, which I believe controls a lot of the perception that people may have towards a police department. And so, one of my questions would be, how can we combat that as it leads to our statistics and how we gain our statistics versus false information that's being put out there publicly?
To put this information out publicly, to make sure people understand it from, from the real perspective, from, from what it is, I think is the first way. And, and, and to get, and there was a study a couple of years ago that was blown completely out of proportion about opioids in our city. I'm sure some of y'all remember that. We had to call the company ourselves and say, you're wrong, to where they finally come to issue an apology, like, to where we're right, like, like you're, you're exposing us to something that, that's really, that the numbers don't, that they don't line up with. So, you know, when, when we do see wrong numbers, taking, taking, you know, contacting those people and saying, and making sure we're getting the correct information out, that's critical, because it's easy to go up and put a hundred thousand, you know, per one hundred thousand capita, and obviously, we're a city of forty-five thousand. And, and I think that is misleading, obviously, and, but, but getting our real information out, it, it, you know, is critical. Obviously, it's there for the FBI to see twenty-four hours a day. Somebody can see it twenty-four hours a day, but maybe publicly for us putting that out ourselves.
And, thank you. And the, and the other part, and I'm glad you were transparent with us, which dealt with homelessness. And I believe we're not just the only, the only city that has to deal with homelessness. And I believe our community needs to know. I think there's not a lot of people who really know that. I think we do a good job with our homelessness, although it's a double-edged sword, because what we're able to provide, as you mentioned, is, you know, the good programs that we have. But then, word gets around and people are transported from Asheville, from Charlotte, because they hear about what we're doing here in the city of Hickory. So, it's a double-edged sword and we're to be commended of what we do, but it's good to certainly inform the community that I, I think we are doing a heck of a job in that area.
And I will mention that, because we're very blessed to have two hospitals in our city. There's very few cities our size that have two hospitals, especially to the level that they, that they have care for. But that does lead a lot, to a lot of homelessness being in our, in our city. So, what happens if there's a voluntary commitment? They could be brought from anywhere in the state of North Carolina, and that happens frequently. They're brought to one of our local hospitals. They stay there for whatever amount of time until a doctor releases them. The law provides that the agency that brought them has to come back and transport them if they want to be transported. But what we find a lot of what happens is they don't want to go get back in a police car and go back where they're, you know, you know, for three hours across the state. And they say, no, I'm good, and they just walk out the door and then they end up homeless in Hickory. And they've obviously been already, you know, suffering from some mental illness. So, we're blessed to have two hospitals that have, that have mental facilities at them, but it's a double-edged sword, like you, like you were just talking about.
I just want to also piggyback on all the commendations. I think one of the things I've realized since living here and participating and even being on the school board prior to this, there's so many activities your officers do around back-to-school, summer activities that go, which goes along with your community policing, above and beyond just your, your roles. And those hours they do put out there are not paid hours. This is all voluntary. So, I really think that makes the difference, hopefully, in your recruitment, too. And my second question relates to that. We talked about having a shortage of police officers a few years ago and how hard it was to recruit. Can you give us a status update on where we are?
We range from anywhere from ten to fifteen, we have, over the last five or six years down. Our attention has been really good over the last several years. You all have been very gracious to us as far as that, as far as compensation, being one thing. Last year, one thing that, or that is hurting us this year, is the state of North Carolina, the North Carolina Criminal Justice Education Training Standards. They added about three and a half weeks to the basic law enforcement training. And what that did, and, and while it's problematic, is all the B L T programs across the states, they were overwhelmed, to be honest with you. And so, now, they're only running two B L T programs. Each place is only running two, two programs this year. That hurt us. We were used to running three to where we're getting more recruits. So, we actually went and met with CBCC prior to this and have been in conversation with them. They've already committed to doing three classes again next year, now that they've gotten, got settled into this new, into this new B L T with all the addition of these hours. But I think that is gonna really help us, too. But, but recruitment, you know, when, when you look at the population of the United States of America and you look at how many law enforcement officers are, and I don't have those direct numbers, but I have looked at them, it's less than about one percent of the population of people that are police officers. There's only a few people that are really called to come do this job. And I said, when I got hired to the Hickory Daily Record, when they interviewed me, what does it take to be a police officer? Like, you have to have a really big heart to help people, to go out and put yourself in arms' way over and over and over again and be experienced with trauma over and over again, and that's tough. And, and our staff does that every single day, because they sacrifice every single day. But remember, we're pulling from a very small pool, just from those numbers right there. So, but, but, but we are getting amazing candidates. We are, we have, planning to go to B L T in January. We have seven committed, really good applicants. Two of those have been our community response units, so. And they're, they're already vetted in our culture. They know how to talk on the radio. They know how to do all our, you know, computers. They're very familiar with the city, so.
And city councils approved increases to police officer entry pay as well as lateral pay. I think we're the highest in western North Carolina and one of the highest in the state. And even with that, you still have shortage. But, you know, we went through the spell in a country where you're demonizing police officers, and guess what? People don't want to be police officers. So, hopefully, we're working through a lot of that and our numbers are getting, getting better.
I have a point and a question. So, one thing that you didn't mention in your presentation that I want to bring to light is your activism, how much time you spend taking issues and addressing them at the state level to try to, you know, get help and, and affect change locally. So, thank you for, for everything you do there. Along with that, I would like to ask, repeat offenders, how big of an issue is that? And that's at top of mind right now with the passage of House Bill three oh seven last Friday. Is repeat offenders for the violent crime, is that, is that substantial here?
Yes, sir, it has been, because it ebbs and flows. But just the cases past weekend, those, the people from this past weekend, they were repeat offenders, people we've dealt with in the past that, that'll be, they've already been, trust me, we were on the phone with the district attorney's office in the middle of the night with the one who's handling all these repeat offenders, and they've already been made aware. But, but yes, sir, it is. And, you know, through the years, we have targeted repeat offenders and, and we've always done that, and we're not gonna stop, because you can't just keep repeating crime over and over and over in our city. We're, we're not gonna tolerate it. And thank goodness the district attorney's office saw fit to assign a very tough prosecutor, a very senior tough prosecutor in our county to address those. So, he, he's, he's no, he's no kidding, so, so we're, we're very glad of that.
Thank you. Thank you so much for everything you did.
And a lot of our violent crime is the, repeat offenders who are out on bond. And so, hopefully, the, that will get, you know, starting to move back to something more. But we see a large percentage of violent crime being permitted, committed by people who years ago would not have been out. So, that's a major issue.
I will bring this to, to light now that you mentioned it, Mr. Wood. Several years ago, we had a, some people shooting at each other, and there was a lot of people around, and, and nobody was injured, but there was really no crime to charge them with. And so, Chief Wisnig, at the time, we proposed a bill to the North Carolina Association of Chiefs of Police, that, basically, like, there's gotta be something. When you just shoot out randomly amongst people and you don't hit them, that's going to terror the people. We couldn't charge that. So, they pushed for legislation through the Chiefs Association. Chiefs Association, all the chiefs around the state said, absolutely, we're dealing with that, too. And because of a, a case that Chief Wisnig and our department pushed, that's actually law now. We were actually able to charge it this past week on incident that we had, so. And just to highlight as well, too, some legislation that got pushed, because our department was behind it, was the community responders. They, they're, they're civilian traffic crash investigators. They were, that was only gonna be a handful of cities in the state of North Carolina. And we said, no, that, we need those in our city as well, too. So, through the Chiefs Association, again, went through there and through legislation, it was passed that it was opened up to all police departments across the state. So, that has been a valuable, valuable tool that we've had, what you just mentioned about-
Well, I, I know there's a lot of work that goes into that, and it goes unseen most of the time, you know, by the general public, so I wanted to call attention to that and thank you for it.
Sir.
How many of these criminals that, during the year are homegrown, or how many are from other areas?
We see a lot of people come from other cities, yes, sir, we do, with the, with the, with the population that, that, that people go out on Highway seventy and the cruisers we deal with. Most of them are not from the city of Hickory. They're not even from Cataba County, we find a lot of times. The people from this weekend, from the crime this weekend, they were not from Hickory. They were from Newton. We dealt with another gentleman this weekend out on Highway seventy, a juvenile in possession of a firearm and out on Highway seventy. He was from Lenore. Quite, quite frequently, we see they're from other areas. And, and not just, you know, cities close to us. They come from quite a distance and they come to our, our city to, to, to commit crimes, unfortunately.
All right, thank you. I'd just like to close with this, where I want to say, sometimes people don't see what we do behind closed doors. And I want to say, almost twelve years now, so twelve years ago, when I first moved into the city of Hickory, I wasn't a part of this city council and didn't never have the mind to be a part of the city council, but I'm here now. But at that time, I believe Wisnig was the chief.
Yes, sir.
And I'm, I'm not sure if you even thought about being the chief of police during that time, twelve years ago. But sometimes what people do behind closed doors, it's good to shed light on it. And I remember just serving as a pastor, meeting police officers and yourself. And there was a young man that was in, I believe, one of the correctional facilities, so got arrested. And you came to me personally, if you remember that, about twelve years ago, and said, Pastor Freeman, can you just go and just check on that young man? Because he just needs some type of influence, some type of positive influence. And those are the things that people don't usually see behind closed doors, but I experienced that twelve years ago, and now here you are as the chief of police. And so, I wanted to shed light on that.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Chief, go ahead, I'm sorry.
One more thing, I'm, I'm almost done. You know, when we talk about community policing, people think about all the events we do, and those are great, but those are a very small part. Something we're, within our staff and our, amongst our department, community policing is every person, every call, every day. That's what we make sure that is told to our young police officers. It's every, your chance to community police is every person, every call, every day, to not forget that. That is the root and that embodies the Hickory Police Department and why we've been so successful for reducing our crime rate.
Chief, I don't have a question, but I do have a couple of observations, a couple
of comments. First of all, I believe this is your third month as our chief of police, so congratulations. I can, I can recall, and I want to make a special recognition, I guess is what you would call it, because obviously, I'm biased to the Hickory Police Department over all the other police departments within the state, having spent 30 years there. But I recall 30 years ago, when the person who actually implemented community police in our city, and I think that this is certainly appropriate to recognize that Chief Floyd Lucas was instrumental in getting us to where we are today with community policing because he is the one that implemented that. We recall it very vividly. And I just want to also thank those of you who were his predecessors because each of the chiefs, including yourself, recognized what a valuable tool that was. And each of them carried on that tradition of making sure that we adhere to the community policing philosophy. Not only that we adhere to it, but that we're the example for the community policing philosophy across the state. Because community policing in some municipalities is not what it is in the city of Hickory. And I know that they do it right in the city of Hickory. And that leads me to my last thing. Obviously, a few weeks ago, when you were recognized and were the 11th police department in the state of North Carolina to get the accreditation is no small feat. So if you look at all the information that you've shared with us this evening and all the other things that have taken place within the police department, and not just within the police department, but of course, it spills over into the other departments within the city and with other nonprofits. You're certainly, you and the entire staff, those of the past and those that are here now and those that will have in the future, we're extremely honored and dedicated and thankful that you've carried on that tradition. So it even relates to our civilian employees who sometimes don't get the recognition that they deserve as well. So we can't say enough thanks and we're glad to hear that crime is at a 30-year low in the city of Hickory. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
All right. Next on the agenda is appointments to our boards and commissions. I'll ask if there's any member of council that would like to make any appointments to any of our boards or commissions this evening. All right, there doesn't appear to be any. We always like to remind those in the audience of the vacancies that we have on the various boards and commissions. Obviously, if you're interested in serving as a volunteer on any of those boards or commissions, you can fill out an application. There's an application on our city website. And if you need any further information, any of our council members or coworkers would be happy to answer any questions that you may have concerning that. Any matters not on the agenda, sir?
No, sir.
All right. General comments? Obviously, big weekend coming up with our Oktoberfest. I'm not sure what number this is, but a big weekend, we'll have a lot of, a lot of visitors in our Hickory.
Sounds like it's 1985.
Okay. So, wow. Been around a long while. But anyway, Oktoberfest is coming up and we just want to remind everybody about that. This year's moving on. Any other, any other general comments by anybody?
Yes, let me say thank you to those who participated in our very first family and friends field day there in Ridgeview. Those that came out, certainly the mayor came out and if you saw it on video, that I beat him in tug of war. He had his team, I had my team.
It was a tie. We had a, it was a tie.
I beat him. And then, want to say, all the fun and games and totters certainly helped out. The community helped out. We gave out free food. Once again, me and the mayor, we had a sack race and the mayor was concentrating on not falling. I was concentrating on winning and therefore hence I won. But to my community, you always know, I just believe in the power and the strength of community engagement. So I want to say thank you for those who helped out.
And for the record, I didn't fall.
Yes. Did not.
All right. Any other, any other comments? All right. I'm going to make a motion that we go into closed session to approve closed session minutes from our August 5 meeting. I also noticed that our distinguished Mr. Scott Mallards back there, he's going to give us some information related to potential economic development. We'll also be discussing some pending litigation. If there is any action taken in our closed session, we will come back and reconvene in this room and take any action that needs to be taken at that time. At this time, I've made the motion that we go into closed session.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any further discussion? All right. That's unanimous. Thank you for being here.